First item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. Would you please rise and join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, can you take roll call, please? Gabriel.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
Polikas.
Here.
Shumway.
Here.
Schuster, absent. Stoner.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Somerville.
Here.
That's eight present and one absent, Your Honor. All right, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is proclamations and presentations. We have one proclamation this evening. All right, it's about advocates for Children's Week. Whereas the General Federation of Women's Clubs will celebrate its dedication towards the promotion and awareness of the physical and emotional well-being of children on October 21st to 27th, 2018, and whereas GFWC members have played an intricate role in advocating for the health and well-being of children since the early 1900s, with prominent club women such as Jane Adams and Julia Lathrop paving the way for implementation of improved child labor and juvenile court laws respectively, and whereas GFWC has played a role in many national efforts including powerful advocacy for the promotions of the physical and emotional well-being of children, including current partnerships with renowned organizations such as St. Jude's Children's Research Hospital and March of Dimes, and historically worked for the passage of child labor laws, promotion of nationwide outreach that led to passage of the Pure Food and Drug Act, assisted in creating the National Park Service, and credited with establishing 75 percent of U.S. public libraries. And whereas throughout the past 128 years, millions of women have given of their time, talent, and resources to improve the lives of children, including women here in the GFWC Laramie's Women's Club, and whereas it would be a tremendous honor for the GFWC Laramie's Women's Club to be able to mark its dedication towards the well-being of children with recognition from the state's respective mayors. Now therefore be it resolved that I Andrea Somerville, acting as mayor and president of the governing body of the city of Laramie, hereby do proclaim October 21st to the 27th, 2018, as GFWC Advocates for Children's Week. We would request that everybody support the Laramie Women's Club in their recognition and this milestone anniversary. So right now I'd like to invite Ann Nelson and Karen Bard, as well as the other members of the Women's Club, up to the podium. I believe Ms. Bard is the state representative for GFWC.
I happen to be the state representative for child advocacy for the Global Federation of Women's Club. I have with me the President, Ann Nelson, our first Vice President, Adrian.
Emma Joyce Spiegelberg.
Emma Joyce Spiegelberg. And our Secretary, Bonnie Rysted. Anyway, we have been serving the community for 120 years. We just celebrated our 120th anniversary here in Laramie in September, and we hope to be continuing to serve the community for a long time into the future. Thank you very much for this honor.
Well, thank you very much for your work in the community and to Laramie and statewide. So thank you very much. If you would, come on this way. Yep, you guys will come up this way. I'll hand you the proclamation, and then we can do a picture for you if you'd like.
Thank you very much.
Of course.
Stand behind them.
Yep.
I was going to say.
This works this way. We've almost perfected it after two years now.
You are.
One more. Well, multiple more, because I'm an amateur.
Thank you so much, and congratulations again.
Thank you.
Thank you again. We really appreciate that. Very much.
Our next item is a public hearing. City Clerk, can you read the notice, please? Notice is hereby given that the city council will hold the following public hearing at 6:00 PM on October 16th, 2018, in the city council chambers, Laramie City Hall, 406 Iverson Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming, to take public comments or protests on the following ordinance, Original Ordinance Number 1988, proposing the adoption of the 2018 International Code Series. All specifications relative to this matter are available for review at the City of Laramie Fire Department, Fire Prevention and Life Safety Division at 405 Grand Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming. Anyone wishing to be heard should be present or may be represented by his or her agent at the meeting. Thank you. So at this time I'll open the public hearing regarding the adoption of the 2018 International Code Series. Is there anybody who would like to make public comment on that item specifically? All right, seeing none, we will close that public hearing. Onto item 4C, announcements. City Manager, do you have any announcements?
We have none, Mayor.
All right, thank you. I have one announcement, and that is to wish UW a good homecoming week and good luck on Saturday, right? We hope so. All right, item number five, disclosures by city council members. Does anybody have any disclosures this evening? Okay, seeing none. Item number six, Vice Mayor.
Okay, I move that the agenda be set as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilor Shumway. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Vice Mayor.
I move that the consent agenda be approved and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
We have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Stoner. City Clerk, can you do a roll call, please? Gabriel.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster, absent. Stoner?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero noes, and one absent, Your Honor. Thank you, that motion carries. Moving on to the regular agenda, item number 10. Councilor Stoner.
Thanks, Mayor. I move to approve the Truman Street Estates preliminary plat based on findings of fact and conclusions of law and subject to all planning commission's recommended conditions.
We have a second? Second by the Vice Mayor. Mr. Bloom, the floor is yours.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, this is a 36-lot preliminary plat that's located in west Laramie. This is essentially an extension of Truman Street between its existing western terminus and Colorado Avenue. Back in the day, this neighborhood had been platted, however, that expired back in about 2009, because during that time period they hadn't recorded preliminary or hadn't recorded final plats within two years of the last one being approved. Essentially, they are continuing the good pattern of the streets over there. Truman Street will extend due west. Similar-sized lots will be platted. Lincoln Street will also be connected to the south to form a T-intersection, so you'll have some more walkability in the neighborhood. Since there is a long block that is not intersected by a street, this is the southern edge of the roadway for Truman Street, there's a required mitigation mechanism, so something that would be found in the streets. In this case, they're doing some bulbouts at the intersection to serve as a traffic calming device in the area for pedestrians to cross. As part of this subdivision, they'll also be putting in a pedestrian connection that will run south from Truman Street to the alley in that back area, which can be used for people to access the areas of the lot. Ironically, if you were to go out there in the neighborhood and look at the land right now, there is a single-track dirt path in the exact location where the sidewalk is proposed. So, kind of interesting. Regarding this, this project is on R2M, so a variety of different uses are allowed there. One is able to construct a single-family home. They can do duplexes or townhomes where they share common walls. Also allowed would be HUD manufactured housing. I can let the developer who's present discuss the proposed development plans for the neighborhood. It's my understanding that they are looking at selling those for home development, but they can clarify that. Throughout the review process, we did send notice prior to the hearing before the planning commission and prior to this meeting to the neighbors within 300 feet, published notice in the newspaper, and also had the development signs posted on the property. We did receive comments from several neighbors. Most neighbors were inquiring as to what was being developed. We did have a comment today concerned with the zoning of the property, because they weren't fond of the allowance of HUD manufactured housing in the land in that area. One commenter did express some concerns with potential increased traffic in the neighborhood. They lived on a nearby unpaved road and were concerned with potential increase in traffic volumes. As part of the subdivision, planning staff and the engineering staff did not require a traffic study. The reason why was because this was an infill development. There will be paved roads that will connect to existing paved roads, and any potential traffic impacts by a 36-lot subdivision would not justify any type of traffic improvement such as off-site road paving, modification to existing traffic signals, or stop signs, especially since you would have such few trips going those different directions. So, staff is recommending approval of this. The planning commission also recommends approval of the preliminary plat subject to staff's recommended conditions. Those conditions are outlined in the staff report, and they are basically our standard conditions that we have for preliminary plats. This is our first preliminary plat that is filed under our new lapse requirements, which basically means they have up to five years to file final plats. I'm hoping for any questions you may have regarding this plat, and the developer could answer any questions regarding development and their engineer with any technical questions regarding the subdivision.
Any questions specific for Mr. Bloom? Councilor Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just one single question. I think you answered it already. It said in the description, "single-family attached developments," so it's always two units together, so it would be whatever, 17 duplexes? Is that correct?
Honorable Mayor and Councilor Hanson, they have the ability to share common walls. From the understanding I have, I don't believe all the lots are proposed to be that direction. I would let the developer speak to what housing could be there. In theory, they could do up to 17 duplex structures for 34 units, or they could do 34 single-family homes, or they could do any combination that would result in fourplexes or three units as well.
And the developers, you to speak about.
Correct.
Councilor Stoner?
Thanks, Mayor. I just have a question about the parking, and this might be a better question for the developer, too. So when I looked at page nine of the staff report, I can see the Truman Street going through kind of the middle of the platted area, so that's going to be a footpath, is that right?
Honorable Mayor and Councilor Stoner, the Truman Street will connect to Colorado, so that will be an extension of that street.
Okay. And it will, okay, great.
And Lincoln will connect south to it.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Councilor Polikas?
Yeah, so I noticed all the width in all the lots are 46 feet. Actually, one of the end ones, 36 feet. Is that our minimum standard for lots now for single-family dwellings? I guess I'm, I know those are very small lots.
Honorable Mayor and Councilor Polikas, the 36-foot lot, at first it perked my eyes, I thought it was 36 feet, which is below the minimum necessary, however, that's just the measurement between the existing boundaries. It's actually 46.
Yeah, yeah, I see it. The radius is in there. I got you. So they're all 46-foot lots, and then you have, what do you have, a setback requirement on a single-family of five feet in that zone?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and Councilor Polikas, when they came in for the plat...
Or side yard.
Yes, we looked at the minimum lot width requirements, which I believe are 42 feet in the neighborhood.
Okay.
But we do have garage door frontage requirements, where if you're doing a two-stall garage door, that could...
Oh, these electronic issues.
Be, it kind of changes how wide of a building you can put on that. Those were included in our first review comments to them. The developer's engineer looked at what they were planning for the lots and made some adjustments. 46 feet is about the minimum width that you can have with a lot that has two five-foot setbacks on either side and a 16-foot wide garage door to still meet our minimum requirements. So that's how those have been set up. But they have tried to balance it to meet our minimum standards.
You're going to have 35 feet of building available. If it's not an attached home, it's going to be 35 feet of building, and within that 35 feet, you're going to have a 20-foot wide double-car garage, which leaves 15 feet. So, but we also have a development standard to try to eliminate the looks of just having garage doors after garage doors after garage doors. How does that come into play on the subdivision?
Honorable Mayor and Councilor Polikas, the way it comes into play is, number one, 46 feet is what the lot width is, so the 45 was skewing our numbers a little bit for the calculation.
36 feet, yeah.
So we have the 36. What it comes down to is the garage door frontage will be limited, I mean, you'll still have garage doors, but you'll still have some additional house there. You will meet those code compliant code things. I got to double-check to see what the width of garage doors was again. I don't remember it off the top of my head.
Well, the standard double garage door is 16 feet wide, and you got to have a little bit of building on both sides of it just to put the garage door in, so.
Here we go, sorry. In the staff report, yeah, the front facade, as you look at a house as a residential structure, the maximum width of a garage door is 16 feet, which on a 46-foot wide lot would be 45 percent of the front of that house. So if you are looking at the house straight on, it's still going to have more front facade that is not garage door than what is garage door.
Wait a minute. The garage door is 16 feet wide, you need a little bit of building on both sides of it. You can't just have a garage door.
Correct.
Okay, so it's probably closer to 18 to 20 feet wide. I just, I'm wondering how this comes into play with, I know we have a development code to try to eliminate the looks of having nothing but a garage door facade looking down a street. And I know there's, what you're saying is there's a percentage there, and by putting in a very small double-car garage, you can make it work, is what I'm hearing from you. Correct?
Honorable Mayor and Councilor Polikas, that is correct.
Okay.
And I would note that these lots are slightly wider than the lots that are located to the east and north on Franklin Street, specifically due to the garage door requirements that the homes are developed in that neighborhood, were developed before these maximum garage door allowances. So this is the bare minimum.
I appreciate that information, thank you.
Other questions?
So, Mr. Bloom, I have one under, on condition number seven, oh, no, I'm just, you're good. On condition number seven in the staff recommendation on page six, says prior to the approval of the final plat, they'll enter into a subdivision security and improvement deferral acknowledgement for the required public improvements for Lincoln Street and Truman Street and the pedestrian connection. Is there any indication of the developer not completing these streets, especially Lincoln's, I assume Truman Street would be, they'd have to have it for the houses, but is there any possibility that this will let them delay paving and building Lincoln Street out?
Honorable Mayor and Council, no, they are not able to delay paving. They will be required to post a bond to guarantee that they will pave that street and develop to city standards. Once it's accepted for the city, at that time, we would begin issuing certificates of occupancy.
Okay.
They would not be allowed to occupy any structure as part of that roadway being built. And I should note that there is a small delayed improvement agreement on the very, very western half that goes between two lots that are platted on Colorado Avenue. So there is a requirement in there that that delayed improvement agreement will essentially be called, to be constructed, when the lands adjacent are final-platted. And that shouldn't be an issue anyway, because they needed to develop those two lots on Colorado, and they also would need it for fire access.
Okay.
Councilor Stoner, did you have another question?
You covered it, Mayor.
Okay. And I just wanted to be sure, I'm looking at the picture here, but both Truman Street and Colorado, as well as Lincoln Street to the north, those are all paved, so they're paving into paved connections. Is that correct? Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Bloom? Councilor Hanson?
Just for a little bit of levity under the public comments, there is a statement which reads, "Two residents had no onions." And I think it was opinions, but it's very funny. So the other ones did have onions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilor Hanson. All right. Thank you, Mr. Bloom. All right, Mr. Blake? Is it Chad? Chad Blake, come on up. Invite the developers and the applicants to come up, and welcome.
Hello, you got questions, or?
Do you want to give us a little bit of information about what you guys are planning out there, or do you want us to just pepper you with questions?
I think it's pretty straightforward. We're just planning on developing lots this time. As we go forward, we will not be building on the lots, so we're just developing land and trying to get the lots back where they were final-platted, try to get back to a final-plated stage, and try to be ready if the market comes to that point, that we're ready to develop.
Questions for Mr. Blake? Councilor Hanson?
With the size of the lot, is there room for, between the houses, you know, I'm still going back to my single-family attached development, I would presume you could put two houses together and then have garden plot on both sides of those attached houses, or how is this going to work out?
Well, I'm not planning on being the builder on the homes. I may be speaking out of turn, but my understanding is if they did do a shared wall on a duplex unit, that that shared wall would be on the lot line and bring it together, so your yard would be on the outside.
So there would be garden on both sides.
That's correct.
And how wide are the houses compared to the lots? Again, you may be speaking out of turn, you don't know.
Well, my understanding is it'd be a five-foot setback on the outside walls with the shared wall in the center, so.
Sure. So it would be if they're singles, standing singly, five feet on both sides.
So it would be 10 foot between structures.
Between two houses, yeah. I'm just concerned about what Councilor Polikas brought up, to have this look of garage, you know, huge garage in the front, and then usually there's something like that up to the south side where the old VW dealer was, one of those houses, or one of those streets, two large, or double-large garage, and then sort of almost a tunnel vision going back for the house itself. And it's very dark and kind of foreboding, you know, to walk into the house. I agree with Councilor Polikas, that should be avoided, that kind of look, you know, that the house is sort of secondary to the garage, so I don't know what you're feeling on that.
Whatever house style they do, will be built to code, or what the city standards are, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Just for the record, I don't have an opinion on that. I was trying to get a thought process of exactly what can be built and how it can be built on there.
Let me add, I have a...
I don't have a negative or positive opinion on it, okay?
And there was thought process in the size of lots to allow for a double garage or try to, because if they went that way.
Any other questions for Mr. Blake? All right, thank you very much. Thank you. All right, so at this time I'd like to open the floor to public comments. Does anybody that would like to give public comment on this item? Please go forward. So if you can introduce yourself for the record, and then there is a sheet of paper right there behind the city clerk, if you'll sign it when you're done.
Okay.
So we can know that, and there's a five-minute limit on public comment.
Okay. Connie Crandall, I'm representing Crandall Excavating. We actually own a house on Truman Street. When we saw the plat, my first initial thought was this is going to be HUD homes with the big garage in front, as I have seen, and we are highly opposed to that. As you said, you have a big garage, it's not safe for those people to be walking back there, and it's just not a good vision from the street, I don't think. I think it's, it just, it's not comfortable, it's not homey, it's not, the house that we own, there's very, they're not very nice, but they're nice homes, they're, I don't know what the size of houses, if there was anything in that, I did not see anything of what size, how many square footage those houses are going to be, but the biggest thing that we had to comment on was that we are highly opposed to the HUD homes with the garage in front, and that's all you see.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your coming tonight.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to offer public comment tonight? All right, so we'll go back to council. Any comments or discussion from council members right now? Councilor Hanson?
Thank you. Maybe just a suggestion. I own a condo in Denver, and it has a double garage, but it's a tunnel garage. In other words, you park two cars behind each other, which makes the frontage just one garage door. And, you know, to avoid this humongous double garage in the front with nothing else visible from the, of the house. So, maybe that's a suggestion, you know, to build it on the side and make it a double garage tunnel-wise. It's a little complicated when you want the back car out, you know, you have to take the front car out, but it can be managed.
Any other comments or discussion?
I actually...
Councilor Polikas?
Take the other car out. No, I, you know, I tell you, first of all, I'm not trying to analyze this from a standpoint of, I just wanted to know how it was going to come together on these small lots, because I hadn't seen a plat with these small lots in a while, but my impression on this is this type of development is a very positive type of development for affordable housing, because the price of lots is really in the frontage of the lots, and if you look at these lots, they're very deep, they're extremely deep. Most city lots are no more than 100-foot deep, and you, very seldom do you see 125-foot deep lots. So you've got the ability to have quite a bit of space in your backyard and so forth and so on, but the big thing about it is, is they're going to be affordable lots, number one, and number two, they're going to be able to accommodate either townhome or twin homes, or they're going to accommodate your smallish homes at hopefully an affordable price, and I think that's one of the things this community needs. So I'm very positive about it, and I, I hope that the developer, Mr. Blake, is successful, and I hope the builder looks at it and says, "Let's do something." I think it'll help our community. Thank you.
Any other discussion or comments? All right, City Clerk, can you do roll call, please? McKinney.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Schuster, absent. Stoner?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero noes, and one absent, Your Honor. Thank you, that motion carries. Thank you. All right, item number 11, Councilor Stoner.
Thanks, Mayor. I move that council approves the second reading in public hearing of Original Ordinance 1988 titled "The Adoption of the 2018 International Code Series."
We have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Gabriel. By just a hair.
Mayor and Council, I thought I'd speak for a minute, because I was not at your last work session, but I understood that there was a little confusion perhaps on what was going on with the formatting of this ordinance change. I wanted to make sure that that was cleared up. We decided to present you an ordinance with asterisks showing what we're not changing to show you that this change is nothing radical. We are largely just changing the reference from the 2015 codes to 2018 codes. There's a couple of spots, as you will see, where we have to refer to a couple of new appendices, things like that. So I'm sorry if that formatting caused confusion. But the real substance of this change is presented by staff here, and it's they you should listen to, because I know nothing of the substance.
All right, is there anything from staff that we need to update or talk about on this, or present? City Manager?
Mayor, request of council, Fire Marshal Doyle has prepared a list similar to what you received last week, highlighting changes in the fire code, 2018 version from the 2015. In addition, you have been provided a little more detail on the 2018 International Building Code, and Tim Hoff is here to answer any questions you have about that. I would suggest Fire Marshal Doyle for his list with you, and then Mr. Hoff just accept questions if you have any on the building code, since we previously discussed that last time.
Sounds great. Fire Marshal Doyle, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Honorable Mayor and Council. I did put together just a few of the changes that I thought...
I did put together just a few of the changes that I thought would be of interest. It's more to kind of explain the, sort of the insignificance of some of the changes that are gonna happen. For example, the portable fire extinguisher, the first one that I've got listed on the sheet that I put forward, basically just says that you can take the fire extinguishers out of the hallways, where they're gonna get students messing around with them, and you can put them into the classroom. It's not quite that simple, and there's some logic behind why they're wanting to do that, and that's in the, in the significance at the bottom of the page there. It also explains that in the event of, in today's society with the events leading up to lockdowns and things like that, it, it provides for us to have a little safety bu- margin there. I also went in and, and explained a little bit on the, on the occupancies listed for the R-two occupancy, R-three occupancy, I-one, I-two, things like that, for different, for some of the different instances where we're gonna do some changes. If you have any questions about those, there's, there's a lot of different types of occupancies. Then the maintenance of means of egress with the exit signage, that basically is cleaning up some language that was kind of confusing in the, in the 2015 code, bringing it forward, it'll, it kind of lays it out a little bit different, and it'll have an amendment in addition on that one. Fire Sprinklers is an existing group, A-two occupancies, A-two is an assembly occupancy, bars typically that serve alcohol with an occupancy load of three hundred people or more. I don't think we're gonna hit that in most of our A-two occupancies in this town, unless they already do. We've already sprinkled buckhorn and the parlor bar, thank goodness. Roxy's put in a suppression system in their building. Other than that, I don't think we've got any other ones that fall into that category hitting the, hitting the three hundred mark. There was an explanation on that issue with, that came about from the station nightclub fire, and the initial NIST recommendation was for any alcohol-serving occupant, A-two occupancy of a hundred or more. That, that made it quite a bit more restrictive, and that would've hit a bunch of the businesses in town. We would've had some suppression systems going in, I'm a huge advocate for them, but we also have to take care of our constituents as far as the businesses, and make sure that we're not burdening them, but I'd like to see sprinklers in every building downtown.
Can I ask a question? The university, the Hilton Garden Inn, that room does easily hold three hundred people. It's equipped with fire suppressant?
Yes, yes. Hilton Garden Inn is, it's a little different type of assembly occupancy, though, because it can be utilized for-
Three sections.
Yeah, well, and you don't have to serve alcohol, that's not their primary
Yeah.
reason for being open.
No.
As opposed to the cowboy bar, or Mingles or Mulligan establishment like that.
Thank you.
The other example that I put in is for the carbon monoxide alarms, and again, that one is, is just cleaning up some language. We used to have to put, with the language the way it was, we would put carbon monoxide alarms in any one of these institutional or residential buildings. And you really don't need them if your building is all-electric and doesn't have an attached garage, you don't need it. So we eliminated the need for that and cleaned up that language a little bit, and, and indicated that if you have a wood-burning fireplace, or a fuel-burning appliance, or an attached garage, that's where it's gonna end up. These, these are just some highlights. If you, if anybody has any other questions about anything else, my office door is always open, you know how to get ahold of me.
That's great. Any questions for the Fire Marshal right now? Councilor Hanson?
The, the carbon monoxide that require, that applies to individual homes, too, or?
No.
No, this is just for hotels?
They slap my hands when I go in your front door.
Yeah.
I would love to come in and assess your home and see if you need one, but as far as addiction, yeah.
But it, I just wanted to know for the audience, you know, it's not for homes-
Not for private residence.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Bloom? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, do we have any questions for Mr. Hoff about building code? All right?
It was me who needed a little more detail, so thank you very much.
All right, do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, go back to council for any discussion or comments from council. Seeing none, city clerk, would you do a roll call, please?
Stoner.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
Somway.
Yes.
Schuster, absent. Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. This item will go on the consent agenda at the next regular meeting unless anybody lets me know ahead of time. Item number twelve, Councilor Gabriel.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to approve on first reading, original ordinance number nineteen eighty-nine, mending section ten point two zero point zero four zero of the municipal code related to maximum driving speeds in the city.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. By the vice mayor. City attorney, I think this one's yours, right?
Mayor, council, this is part of my campaign to modernize and streamline some parts of code. It looks, and I don't know the history of the preceding speed limit ordinance, but as you can see it on your cover sheet, it, it seemed to have been cobbled together over the years, so to avoid any chance of confusion, we, we think it's easier in our office to have an ordinance that says, "The speed limit is the posted speed limit. If nothing is posted, it's thirty miles an hour." Certainly, we have speed limits in the city higher than thirty miles an hour, but they're posted, and lower. I'll note two things. This does not affect school zones, which have a separate ordinance, and as you can see around town, we have plenty of school zones that has a separate ordinance for many reasons, not one of which the fines are higher, set by the Supreme Court and their, their bond schedules. So this doesn't affect school zones, nor does it affect the general ordinance that if there's a, a special condition or hazard, you must, you cannot drive at a speed that makes that, cannot drive at a dangerous speed given the condition of those hazards. So I don't think, the bottom line is, I don't think this changes anything in the city, yet, in fact, I know it doesn't, it just makes it more clear, so we can refer to one ordinance for speeding violators who wish to argue about it.
All right, questions? Councilor Hanson?
Thank you, Honor. I have a concern with ten, twenty, zero, forty, speed limits maximum. In the second line, it says, "No person shall drive as vehicle on a highway street," or, now here comes the trick, "alley within the city, or at a rate, et cetera, et cetera." I almost would suggest that you say, "Except alley," because I live in a street with a very, very tight alley, and I don't want anybody to say, "Wait a minute, I can race through here now at the speed of thirty miles an hour." It's a dangerous, secondly, I will probably take out my fence, trees, and whatever else is there, garbage cans. So that, that concerns me, that, you know, you include alley, maybe you want to leave alleys off. That's another possibility. But I think the alley speed ought to be at maximum fifteen miles an hour, quite frankly, the way it, my alley is constructed. Thank you.
City attorney.
Yeah, fair enough, Counselor. I had left alley out, and then somebody pointed out to me that people could be driving their Lamborghinis down the alley at a hundred miles an hour. So what we did, but when we put alley back in, we don't have any speed limits, we don't have a posted speed limit in our alleys. So right now, depending on how you read that current ordinance, one hopes that the speed limit is thirty right now. It is. They seem to be in urban districts. So then we talked to the police department, is there a problem with speeding in alleys? And as far as, and I'm not trying to be flippant, I mean, we asked, and then we were told, no, not really, and given the state of our most alleys, like yours, the ordinance for driving in excess of, you know, more than reasonable under the conditions that exist, would imply to somebody doing that in alleys. Now, I could, if council wishes, put in a separate speed limit for alleys. So that's, that's, that was the thought process, and we, we did think about that.
Well, I raised my concern.
Councilor Hanson, this'll take three readings, so you could bring an amendment next time if you'd like, possibly? Any other questions for city attorney? All right, thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing no public, we will move back to council, any discussion or comments? City clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Somway.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
Stoner.
Yes.
Schuster, absent. Gabriel.
Yes.
Hanson.
I have a procedural question. If I vote yes, can I bring it back up for change? Yeah, I can, yes.
Yes, you can. McKinney.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilor Hanson, if you have an amendment for next time, maybe get together with the city attorney, make sure it's all worded the way it needs to be worded.
Glad to, yeah.
Be awesome, thank you.
Talk to the city attorney.
All right, item number thirteen, public comments on non-agenda items. All right, moving on to item number fourteen, consideration of future council work sessions. Does anybody have any requests at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to fifteen. Councilor Hanson?
I move that council adjourn to executive session regarding litigation according to Wyoming State Paragraph sixteen dash four, dash four oh five A, Roman number three.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by the vice mayor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned to executive session.